I'd like to call the village board meeting to order for Tuesday, April 27th. Roll call, please, Beth.
President Mary Kardowski.
Here.
Trustee Gary Paul.
Here.
Trustee Steve Kabaki.
Here.
Trustee Chris Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Allison Williams.
Here.
Trustee Jay Krieger, excused. Trustee Tracy Flukie.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge. And please remember our men and women throughout the world in uniform. I have no changes to the agenda.
There, I think there is something that, minor, that needs to be addressed on the, what is it, item Agenda M. On the possible discussion for the no parking at True Lane. Full explanation that lists True Lane in front of Pioneer School that should read.
Valley View.
Valley View.
Yeah. Yeah. I was going to change, well, I had that circled for when we get there, but.
Madam President, also, the resolution related to the supporting strong state and local partnerships, the number on the agenda should be corrected. For the resolution, I believe, Beth, that should be R4, R3?
R3.
R3.
So, R4-3-21?
No, I apologize. So, Resolution 4-3-21. And that should be for item 9A.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. With those changes, move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with those changes. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Action on the open minutes from March 23rd, 2021.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Zerbal, seconded by Trustee Flukie, to accept. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number six, comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Must state name and address, limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named. And the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Is there anybody who would like to say anything about items not on the agenda? Okay, moving on. Number seven, this is the fun part. Chief, we have the oath of office.
It is the fun part, thank you. I appreciate the board taking their time to allow us to recognize our new officer. Alex Baez started with us on March 29th. This is truly one of the most enjoyable parts of my job, is welcoming a new member to our team. Well, the boy's gotta go. Fire call, so. It doesn't, every, it has, hasn't it? Yeah. So, before I get Alex up here to do the badge pinning and swearing in, just going to give you a little bit of background on him. Alex moved to Green Bay with his family when he was in middle school. He was fortunate to meet his wife in high school. And like a lot of us, our better halves encouraged us to do things that we didn't think we could do. And so, she encouraged him to start taking classes in the EMS field. While he was doing that, he was able to receive a certification and advanced paramedic license. He got his degree in NWTC with paramedic, in paramedicine with an advanced cardiac life support and pediatric advanced life support. He received a certification in international trauma life support and became a critical care paramedic for Gold Cross. Alex also, while working for Gold Cross, was part of their rescue task force, so he did a lot with them. Alex decided he wanted a little bit more. His wife, I'm sorry, his mother was an officer in Puerto Rico, and he always admired her for what she did. So, he decided that he wanted to pursue a career in law enforcement. So, in 2020, he graduated from the law enforcement academy at NWTC. And he was hired with Green Bay Police Department. And a short time later, he decided he wanted to continue with law enforcement and his paramedic license. So, he decided what better place to do that than here. So, we are very fortunate to have him. And we appreciate everything that he is bringing to the table for us. And he is eager to learn the fire service as well. So, with that, I will bring Alex up. Mary, why don't you come down, read the oath of office? Do you need me to hold the microphone for you? All right, all right.
Raise your right hand, please. I, Alex Baez, do solemnly swear.
I, Alex Baez, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
To the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without. Without any mental reservations or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservations or purpose of evasion.
And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Public Safety Officer.
Of the Office of Public Safety Officer.
For the Village of Ashwabanan.
For the Village of Ashwabanan.
Acting to the best of my ability.
Acting to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Alex. So, with that, we'll invite Heidi up to do the badge pinning. Remember, no pressure, you're fine. There you got it, congratulations.
There you go.
Congratulations, Alex Baez. Alex, come on over here, welcome.
Okay. Number eight, we have written communications or announcements. One of the things, we have the GFOA award for financial reporting. Greg did a great job on our financial reporting again this year, so we got that award. And we also got the recognition as a 2020 Tree City USA. So, thanks to Tim, our forester, Park and Rec Department, and our financial department, so. Anybody else have any other announcements? We need a motion of approval, no, okay. Okay, number nine. Action on the consent agenda. 9A, Consider Discuss Act on Resolution 4-3-21. Supporting a strong state and local partnership, shared revenue funds, critical services. B, action on operators licenses. C, action on change of agent, LOF2, Green Bay TRS, LLC, DBA, Delta Hotels by Marriott, Green Bay. D, proclamation declaring April 30th, 2021, as Arbor Day in the Village of Ashwabanan. E, the investment report. F, budgeted expenditures. And G, department reports. Now, I would like to pull 9A because that is a resolution that we should actually vote on. So, I need a motion to approve.
A motion to approve Resolution R4-3, 2021, supporting a strong state and local partnership, shared revenue funds, critical services.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Tracy Flukie, a second by Steve Kabaki, to accept the Resolution 4-3-21. Now, does everybody understand what that, it's a, just a statement to the, to the state to say that we need the shared revenue funds and they should not cut shared revenue funds from our, our budget. Okay?
That's a very appropriate resolution. Those funds are critical to not only our municipality, but other municipalities throughout the entire state. And they've been cut over the years, and they should be reinstated as best they can to help us out.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Now, I need a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Move to approve is presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Paul, seconded by Trustee Zerbal, to approve the rest of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, 10, public hearing, 10A, public hearing regarding ordinance 04-1-21, amending the Bay Park Square planned unit development setbacks along South Oneida Street. Aaron?
I'll give a brief overview of the PUD amendment request for the public hearing. The request is to amend the Bay Park Square PUD along South Oneida Street to reduce the front yard setback from 35 feet, as required currently, to 25 feet from the right-of-way for the principal structure and 0 feet for drive-through canopies. This came about as a result of the Chick-fil-A site plan review. And it came to our realization that not only was the proposed Chick-fil-A encroaching into the setback, but two additional businesses on the stretch of Oneida Street were also within the 35-foot setback. Reducing the setback along the South Oneida Street section of the Bay Park Square PUD will bring those two existing buildings into compliance, and it will also allow for the construction of the Chick-fil-A as approved by Site Plan Review Committee.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to speak for or against this item? Anybody like to speak for or against this item? Anybody like to speak for or against this item? Hearing none. I need a motion to close public hearing. So, move.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Williams, seconded by Trustee Paul, to close a public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Public hearing is closed. 11, action items. 11A, action regarding ordinance number 04-1-21, amending the Bay Park Square planned unit development setback along South Oneida Street. Anybody have any questions, or I'll entertain a motion?
Move to approve the ordinance 04-1-21, amending the Bay Park Square planned unit development setback along South Oneida Street.
Do I have a? Second, okay. A motion by Trustee Paul, seconded by Trustee Williams, to approve ordinance 04-1-21. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried.
I have a question, just out of curiosity, for the Chick-fil-A or any other that have drive-throughs there. Is it just the canopy that's, is the physical, just the building? Is that still? Would that adhere to the old setback, or, you know? If it didn't have the canopy on there?
So, right, the, the building now will be allowed to be within 25 feet of the right-of-way? So, the principal building will be 25 feet. The canopy itself, whether it's for Chick-fil-A or other buildings, could be a zero setback.
Oh, that's, yeah, 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 okay. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Okay, 11B, action regarding requested site plan review for Merge Urban Development Building Number 1, Climbing Gym at 680 Block of Mike McCarthy Way, Parcels VA-54-2 and VA-55-A. Aaron?
As indicated on the screen, as outlined in red, what you see there is the proposed addition to what was a previously approved five-story multi-use building by Merge Urban Development. The proposed addition is for the Odyssey Climbing Company. What they'll have is indoor rock climbing walls and bouldering gym, which is amenity for the residents as well as the public. The Site Plan Review Committee has reviewed it in terms of the exterior of the climbing gym. Its proposal consists primarily of concealed fastener metal panels of different shades of grades to try to break up the mass. There will be a three-foot masonry wainscot along the bottom of the building. Let me just bring up the elevation here. And on the north side of the building, there will be the primary entrance along with a glass, glass curtain wall. To break up the mass along Mike McCarthy Way, there is going to be planted a number of six Princeton Sentry Gingko Baloba trees, again, to break up the mass of the gym wall. In addition to the climbing gym, there'll be the addition to, I guess, kind of further market the property or bring it in. If you recall, on the original site plan, it did show the patio area or the plaza in front of the Merge building. There will be two small, child-friendly little climbing hills, or little bumps, basically, to get them engaged in climbing a little bit as well. As previously mentioned, the Site Plan Review Committee and Planning Commission have previously recommended approval with the staff conditions. And I'll list off those staff conditions for the record. All ground-mounted and roof-mounted mechanically units and associated materials need to be screened from view from the subject property line and right-of-way boundaries. All metal wall panels are to utilize concealed fasteners. A three-foot masonry wainscot from finished elevation is required for metal panels. As the building is greater than 50 feet tall and with an airport zoning district C, the applicant must obtain an application for height permit and approval from the Green Bay Austin Straball Airport Director. The catch-all meet all applicable requirements of the Ashwabanan Site Plan Review and all other Ashwabanan municipal ordinances. From public safety, coordinate with the Ashwabanan Public Safety and the potential need for private fire hydrants. And that communication has actually started already, and they're in the process of working through that. And also inclusion of a Knox box at the primary entrance. Further from forestry, provide a detailed planting schedule with scientific and common names of proposed plantings for review and approval by forestry. Provide detailed planting diagrams for all landscaped areas. And then owner will be responsible for all plant, material planted in the right-of-way with understanding the village will not be held responsible for damage caused as a result of normal operations. And ensure the maximum plant height is no greater than 30 inches. From the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, inclusion of bicycle parking that meets the recommendations of the Association of Pedestrian and Bicycling Professionals near the retail use and a second for tenants near the primary entrance. That's actually from the Merge Urban Development Project. And certainly, the climbing gym should also have a bicycle parking in accordance with this recommendation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Aaron, can you clarify for the gingos that are to be planted? Are there six on south, south elevation and then six on the east elevation? Or a total of six to block that large expansive wall?
Right, there'll be six for sure on the south elevation. I'd have to refer to the plan to take a look at the north elevation. I know the, the glass curtain wall is on the north side to help break that up.
Explain to me exactly what a glass curtain wall is, then, please.
Sure, it's, if you can picture typical taller buildings in cities where they have, it's the doors and they have the glass kind of extending up along the wall. It's the massive light that allows that to come in.
Thank you. So, maybe the forester, if you could clarify the elevations. I think it's the east elevation and south elevation to make, have Tim check on that, make sure there's enough trees on both those elevations because the expansive.
Certainly.
Or steel that will be there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As Aaron said, that was brought between the Site Plan Committee and the Plan Board. I'll move to approve the project as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Paul, a second by Trustee Kabaki, to approve. Is that with staff conditions?
With staff conditions, yes.
Okay.
Approved, yes.
Okay. Any more discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 11C, action regarding the preliminary plat at Highland Ridge Estates, Parcels VA-L184 and VA-L197. Aaron?
Okay, the requested preliminary plat, as you see up on screen. Keep in mind that the plat itself is rotated 90 degrees to fit on the page. The road to the north is Sand Acres Drive, which of course runs north-south, to just kind of give you a point of reference there. Surveyor Doug Wells of McMahon Associates and developer Trevor Thompson have submitted the requested preliminary plat for the Highland Ridge Golf Course, the northern part of it. The southern part with the, will remain an executive nine-hole golf course for the foreseeable future. The preliminary plat, as presented, depicts a total of 134 single-family parcels. The property is all zoned R1 residential already. The proposed lots all meet the minimum standards for the R1 zoning district. Lot sizes vary from 11,700 square feet to 39,057 square feet. In terms of the plat itself, it's, it's kind of narrowed shape there because of the golf course, but also because of the extensive environmental features that run through that area. There are two creeks that flow on the, be the southeast and the northwest portion of this property with extensive floodway and floodplain. So, developing the site was a challenge. And because of those floodways and floodplains, you'll see the one connection to Sand Acres Drive right up here. I'm going to use the cursor. Right here is the one connection to Sand Acres. Future connections are planned to the southwest here through the neighboring property, which will eventually connect to Grant Street. Since the Planning Commission meeting, the Ashwabanan Bike and Ped Committee did have a chance to take a look at the subdivision plat. And they did have a number of recommendations that I'll get to here in just a little bit. But the discussion at committee really centered on the desire for pedestrian accommodations within the subdivision plat. In terms of staff review and, and comment on the property, the Village of Subdivision ordinance does explicitly identify those required utilities, street and other improvements for standard requirements for new subdivision plats. Sidewalks were not listed in there, which is why that was not initially brought forward. But that is something that Bike and Ped did want to have discussed at village board. In terms of the Bike and Ped Committee recommendations, including sidewalks throughout the subdivision, in your staff report, it does indicate the developer said he's open to placing sidewalks on both sides of Highland Ridge Drive to Hank Avenue and then Hank Avenue from Highland Ridge Drive southwest include lots 87 and 56. Since that was written, Trevor and Doug have proposed a 10-foot multi-use trail on the north side of Highland Ridge Drive and then on the, maybe the west side of Hank Avenue. So, that's for village board consideration. Then also, at Bike and Ped, place a public access easement between lots 121 and 122 for future access to potential future A&R Pipeline easement trail. Currently, that would extend into the nine-hole golf course, which again will be an ongoing concern for the foreseeable future. The Village is to develop an access path across Outlet 2 to connect to future development to the west. Village to develop an enhanced mid-block bicycle and pedestrian crossing at the intersection of Sand Acres Drive and Highland Ridge Drive to connect to the Sand Acres Drive Trail. From Planning Commission, their recommendations include the following. Preparation and adoption of a formal development agreement between the Village of Ashwabanan and Highland Ridge Properties LLC for approval by the Ashwabanan Village Board. Specific details to include utility, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, water main and roadway, curb and gutter, roadway, street lighting, cluster mailboxes, initial and final asphalt, design, construction, warranty and payment. Identify the phased approach to the construction and implementation of temporary cul-de-sacs on Hank Avenue, Lucy Lane, Highland Ridge Drive and temporary roadway connection of Hank Avenue, Ellen Joe Way, Cross Lot Number 88. And the process for deeding Outlets 1 and 2 to the Village for storm water management purposes. And it does remind me, I should mention that the proposed final plats, as they come through, will be phased in three separate sections. They are indicated on the preliminary plat as the dashed lines. So, should the preliminary plat be approved at tonight's meeting, you will see a final plat come through at, in the near future for the northern portion of the subdivision. Roughly, give or take, we'll say 40 lots in there. Additional Plan Commission recommendations, receipt of comments from Ashwabanan Public Safety regarding feasibility of providing emergency services to subdivision's one public street access. And I have received comments from Public Safety. We worked through a couple of questions on the permanent and temporary cul-de-sac lengths, and we're good there. Required looping of the public water main system serving the development to ensure there is not a single water feed until future development occurs to the south or west. Concept designs depict the looped water main for Highland Ridge Drive. Again, that's to ensure that there is, if case there's a disruption of service, that we continue to maintain water service to the rest of the subdivision. Provision of documentation regarding approval for wetland filling on Hank Avenue, Lot 17, from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources prior to construction. Payment of the park fee of $40,229. And last but not least, approval by the Brown County Planning Commission. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, as mentioned, Doug Wells and Trevor Thompson are in the audience as well.
Aaron, can you, with your cursor, kind of take a little more time and go over, you kind of went over kind of quickly, and I was trying to go over it myself. What the developer is willing to do as far as some of the, where they want to put sidewalks and, and what the village is going to do as far as some of the, the access paths and things like that, what you did before up here, so you get a better understanding of that.
Sure.
Also, Aaron, the path that they're recommending to, or wanting to know about, so.
You've got sidewalks and a path that we'd like to see.
Right, okay. So, for the path, as currently requested by the developer as an alternative to sidewalks on both sides of Highland Ridge Drive, what you see here, this is Sand Acres Drive, right here. The dark area right here would be a 10-foot asphalt path along the north side of Highland Ridge Drive, which is the primary east-west route through the subdivision. That would extend through the subdivision over here to Hank Drive. It would then jump across to the east block, continue to the south and west, eventually reaching the future connection into the adjacent properties. So, that is what the developer has requested as an alternative to the Bike and Ped recommendation of sidewalks throughout the subdivision. And then secondarily, as an option to sidewalks on this, on these streets in these locations.
Which ones, Aaron, were the ones that you were talking about easements? Can you pull that up?
Sure. The easement would be located right here, between these two lots. This right here is the existing A&R Pipeline that extends through the village. And actually, there's the Crusher Dust Trail to the east of Sand Acres Drive. Now, again, this is going to continue as a nine-hole executive golf course into the foreseeable future. So, that was the request at Bike and Ped, was to include the easement here. Should the golf course ever cease operations and if a trail would ever be connected on the A&R Pipeline, that the subdivision would have access to that potential future trail in this location.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Personally, I like the, the idea of the trail. We here in the village do not have any restrictions on sidewalks in subdivisions, which I'm not aware of any sidewalks ever put in any subdivisions or in the past have had any sidewalks other than what was made for the, for the schoolchildren. My preference is the, I like the trail idea. I like the exit into the par three golf course. I think that is another access that will extend out to the golf course or eventually out to. out to the sidewalks on Sand Acres Drive. So I think that's a good feature that they're doing there. I'm really not for sidewalks. I don't think that's something we should get into because we do not have that in our ordinances, and I don't care to see them in our ordinances.
Anybody else have any comments?
Yes, I would just like to respond to the comments on the trail itself. There is... not a theory, side path suitability indexed that looks at side paths and where they should be placed and where they should not be placed. If you would take this pathway where it is proposed to be placed, it would not do well on the side path suitability index. And the reason it would not is because there's a lot of crossing of that side path. It wouldn't be as safe. Typically, side paths you want in an area that you do not have a lot of crossings. They may be adjacent to a river. They may be adjacent to an impervious surface of some kind. So they're much safer in that type of application. Sidewalks... having sidewalks in the subdivision will create an 86% safety factor for the residents in the subdivision. This subdivision will have 131 homes in it with potentially small children, young families, and senior citizens. And they will be moving through the subdivision particularly to head over to Sand Acres Park, which is across Sand Acres Drive. So people will be moving in this subdivision. Bike Ped discussed this extensively at their meeting, and some of the other concerns that came up were the curvature of those roads in that development. Yeah, you can walk on the road, but the members of the committee were concerned because they walk in the other roads in the community, and having roads that have such curves in them and not having a space, a sidewalk for residents to be in, they felt was not safe. I realize, Gary, that we have not had sidewalks in our community for many years. This is a chance for the village to really look at people coming into this community and making it as safe for them as we can. We're going to have, like I said, a lot of young families, a lot of seniors in this area, and having sidewalks on all the roads in this subdivision will make it a much more appealing subdivision, and it will also make it a much safer subdivision. When I look at projects in the village, I always think of people, property, and everything else. So when I'm reviewing this type of thing, I want to make sure that our residents, our future residents, are safe. So taking the people and looking at people first. So I would highly recommend we put required sidewalks in this development and the cut-thrus that were proposed to allow people to walk safely in the development and encourage people to move through the development and move out of the development safely. The other concern I have is the one access point coming out of Highland Ridge Estates out to Sand Acres. We really need to consider an enhanced crossing coming out of that for bikes and pedestrians. Everyone's going to want to get across the street to that path that's located on the east side of Sand Acres, and they're going to want to continue to the park located, again, on the east side of Sand Acres. We need to make it as safe as we can for people to do that. And we also want to make sure that in the future, we don't have the residents living here coming back to the village and saying, "Boy, you know, it's really hard for me to get out of my neighborhood. There are these concerns or this concerns." Just like we see on Cormier Road right now. Cormier Road, we have done a lot of changes to. We've put some enhanced sidewalks and crosswalks in that area. I envision the same thing occurring here when we add that many more people to this area and specifically moving through Sand Acres and onto Sand Acres and out of this development.
Okay. Anybody else?
I don't think using Cormier as an example is a good example because Cormier is a through road through the village with a much higher speed limit. In this, I'm assuming it'll be a 25 mile an hour speed limit through here. You're going to have possibly, I'm assuming, Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, a four-foot sidewalk, and you're going to give up a 10-foot trail for a four-foot sidewalk, when a 10-foot trail will give people opportunity to walk leisurely, feel safe on that, and be able to meet and greet people there and not disturb anything else. To put the sidewalks in in this development is an excessive cost to the developer, which is going to be pushed on to you people that are going to buy a lot and to live in this area. The developer is trying to make this as safe as possible and doing a trail to give you the opportunity of having someplace to walk, someplace that you can get out, and do it at a much more reasonable price for you people.
Who's... who would be responsible for the maintenance, snow removal, repairs of any sidewalks put in?
At this... that would be something that would be discussed through the development agreement. That's one of those details that we'd have to work out. At this point, the village does not maintain any trails for snow removal. I know that, you know, Tracy and Steve, I think you're talking about that at Bike and Ped. So that's up for discussion right now as far as what happens in the future with those trails.
Well, no, I'm talking sidewalk. There's a difference between trails and sidewalks, right?
Yes, absolutely. Sidewalks are the responsibility of the property owner. The trail is, I guess, up for discussion at this point.
Okay, because now, because we did a survey a couple of years ago on Cormier, and, you know, as far as sidewalks.
Right.
If I recall, I don't know how clear my memory is on it, but it was towards 50/50 or less that people wanted them on there.
Yeah.
Care for the maintenance on them.
Right.
And that's a road that, when I look at it and drive up and down it, that's a road that could really use sidewalks, but that's not my decision.
Right. Well, we've never had... so our policy in the village has been, when there are sidewalks put in with the safe routes to school dollars, the village has maintained those sidewalks. But other sidewalks, if they're not put in with safe routes to school, the village does not maintain those. Am I correct, Doug?
Just as a point of clarification, when we talk maintenance, for snow removal on safe routes to school sidewalks, the village takes care of that. When it comes to the replacement or the repair of the sidewalk, if a cake or two has to come out because it's cracked, that's a village maintenance item that is taken care of. Just as a clarification, when we talk maintenance, there's the snow removal, and then there's the ultimate replacement or repair of bad sidewalk panels as they age. So just as a clarification, for snow removal, safe routes to school are taken care of by the village. The rest of them are taken care of by the property owners. The replacement of the concrete of the panels of sidewalk when they are defective or age, that is a village responsibility.
Okay. And to clarify, what the developer is willing to do as far as the sidewalks, they were willing to put on both sides of the street... on which street?
Initially, that was on both sides of Highland Ridge Drive. So if you look up here on the map, this is Highland Ridge Drive right here.
Yeah.
And it's going to connect down here to Hank Avenue to the south, to the property line. That was the initial discussion, and then that, I guess, transitioned into the 10-foot path as a preferred option by the developer. And I guess I'd probably ask to see if it'd be okay with you if Trevor or Doug would discuss why they wanted to go the path as opposed to the sidewalks?
Could I have you please come to the table and state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Trevor Thompson with Highland Ridge, or 306 S. West Oak... Old Oak Drive, Grand Shoot, Wisconsin for the address. But I'm with Highland Ridge Properties. I'm the developer of this proposed development. And when we were brought forward with this plan, knowing that sidewalks weren't in the ordinance, we didn't plan for it. Once we received feedback from Bike and Ped, that's when we started looking at options and got into the discussion with staff about providing pedestrian travel along Highland Ridge Drive, which is really the main feeder street to the subdivision for the other interior streets. With that discussion, the sidewalks on both the north and south side were talked about. But when we dug into the engineering of it, and I'll let Doug speak to that, we started to see some issues that would potentially hinder the south side particularly, where it made more sense to really direct it to the north side of Highland Ridge Drive so we're not interfering with water mains, fire hydrants, and grading for the stormwater facility, which is Outlet 1. Am I missing anything there?
No, I'm Doug Wells with McMahon Associates at 1445 McMahon Drive in Nina. Trevor's correct. When we looked at this, there was a couple of things with laying out sidewalks and/or the path. We thought maybe the path was a better option on the north side due to the fact of, again, we have water main and hydrants and that on the south side. Another thing that we looked at is having a trail or sidewalk adjacent to the stormwater pond. Due to the size of the pond and the sloping, we didn't think it would be the best to have a sidewalk or a trail right adjacent to the pond. So therefore, we thought maybe the north side would be the best option.
Since we were eliminating the four-foot sidewalk on both, say, the north and south end, that's where the 10-foot trail on the north side came to allow for the increase in travel by eliminating that south end. And then also eventually connecting to Sand Acres Drive and into that trail system and so on. And then as we head to the southwest, we'd propose that it would eventually stub into the neighboring property, hopefully down to Grant Street, and just continue to add to the current trail system that's in place with the community.
I understand, you know, both sides of this issue. The Bike and Ped would like to see the sidewalks. Others would like to see the trail. I think it's... I really think it's a good compromise considering that in our ordinance, it does not require sidewalks. So this developer developed this subdivision knowing that it didn't have to have sidewalks. And until, you know, if that were to get changed, I think that that would, you know, they would then have to put in sidewalks in subdivisions. But we don't have it right now, so I think the trail is really a good compromise.
I've got one more comment, if that's all right, just regarding the easement primarily on 121 and 122 for the future connection. Since the plan is to continue to run the executive nine-hole as a private business, we'd really like to direct pedestrian traffic to the clubhouse so they can enter through the front of the business, opposed to a dedicated easement that would be plotted right away. I understand the connecting point there, but from a liability standpoint, if nothing else, if we've got people knowing that's a pedestrian, that that's a dedicated public right-of-way they could walk through and enter the back of it, it just opens up quite a bit of liability from a golfing standpoint and a business operational standpoint. I think we've got options with the gas pipeline that currently goes through that property and the easement that will be there to eventually tie in to what is currently the Lynn property or the property to the west if we need to do a trail there, or potentially if that land use were to change from a private business into something else, considering it's pretty much all floodplain, it would likely become a park, and at that point, we would look to dedicate an easement. Just kind of food for thought, keeping in mind that the executive nine is currently open and active with active golf play. And as we look to create easements to allow access to different portions of that property, we just want to be cognitive of people's safety that they're not walking into the green space and getting hit by somebody teeing off in case Gary's out there playing or something. But that's it.
Well, you're going to golf with me, you're going to be in trouble watching where my ball is anyway, so I don't see that as a problem. You said that was between lot 121 and 120, did you say?
122.
122.
122. All right, all right. That's a close access over to the power line there or gasoline. Question I have for you fellows. Highland Ridge, if there was a sidewalk there going out to Sand Acres Road, what side of the sidewalk is on Sand Acres Road?
The existing trail is on the east side of Sand Acres.
On the east side? So there's still... if you had sidewalks there, they still got to cross Sand Acres Road to get to the sidewalk on Sand Acres?
Correct.
That's another problem.
It's a trail on Sand Acres though, Gary, that they would be crossing too.
Pardon?
It's a trail on Sand Acres they would be crossing too?
Yeah, that's true. That's true. Either way, they got to cross it.
I have a question on the right-of-way. I understand the road right-of-way is about 70 feet wide. So we're looking at a 16 and a half foot terrace on each side of the paved surface. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe it's a 37-foot back-to-back roadway and then with the terraces and the 10-foot trail. I think that's what they're doing with it, Doug, looking at 37-foot back-to-back.
Yes.
That's correct.
So then my question is, your concern on the outlot and the water pond there, you have 16 and a half feet of right-of-way behind the curb that can be used for a sidewalk. So why are you concerned about that? The pond wouldn't go up to the village right-of-way, I would assume.
It would go up to the village right-of-way, but typically...
You still have 16 and a half feet.
Right. Typically, you know, like sidewalks or something like that, they'll position them closer to the right-of-way lines.
Right.
And then what we're trying to do is leave enough room for the water main and hydrants on the south side that would be in the terrace between the walk or the trail and the curb.
Yeah.
Therefore, that, we thought, it would be better on the north side because there would be less impacts with hydrants.
Correct. But you would still have room for your hydrants between the sidewalk and the curb, correct?
You could do that, yes.
So you could have a sidewalk on the south side, and you could have a sidewalk on the north side with the amount of space that you do currently have in your design, correct?
You could do it, yes.
Thank you.
Just a few thoughts on it. Tracy made some very good points. You know, on Sand Acres, that trail is on the east side of the road, and there are very limited access points, so that's why that trail works good in that manner. We also have trails on Packerland Drive, and there's not a lot of single-family access points onto Packerland Drive. That's why those trails work well. Trails work well in certain locations, and I don't think a trail's going to work well in this location because it's going to be so disruptive as you go from lot to lot to lot to driveway to driveway to driveway. The trails just don't work as well in that manner. It works great on Packerland Drive. It works well on the east side of Sand Acres. But there's a good point where sidewalks would, you know, perhaps there would be a compromise where you would put sidewalks on both sides of just, is it Highland Ridge Drive? That could be a compromise. Again, you are taking a lot of people across that roadway. I think an enhanced access point onto Sand Acres from Highland Ridge Drive makes a lot of sense so you can get people across safely. I also think that easement that's between, what, 120 and 121, that could be stipulated that that easement is in place and is not developed until the next portion of the golf course is developed, and that could fall into place. So with that, those would be things I could support. A sidewalk on both sides on Highland Ridge, is it Hank Drive then that goes to the...
Correct, yes.
And there, then that could tie into ultimately Grant Street at some later point in time. You know, I think we've done a great job with trails, be it Packerland Drive, be it Main Avenue, be it Sand Acres, be it the A&R Pipeline, and to tie all these things together makes a lot of sense for the entire community. I think we've done a good job. Can we do a better job? I think we can do a better job even. I know we don't have sidewalks in our ordinance, but in this case, I'm not sure if a trail system makes sense. You know, I remember back in 1995 when I was first hired here, and I, unbeknownst to me, was placed on the... in charge of the sidewalk committee. And I remember when we had over 200 people at those meetings... And I remember when we had over 200 people at those meetings, and there was not enough barbecue sauce to soothe my wounds at those meetings. So I understand sidewalks are not necessarily something that's welcomed or was, I use the term welcomed with open arms in Schwabenon. But in this case, I think it makes some sense if there would be a compromise of the sidewalks just on Highland Ridge and Hank. The access point, keep that easement there between 120 and 121. That opens up access to that pipeline and makes it much more walkable, much more bikeable, whatever the case may be. And then an enhanced access point on Sand Acres off of Highland Ridge Drive there because you're going to have a lot of people crossing there. And Highland, or Sand Acres is meant to be a connector and, or a collector, excuse me. And you're going to want people to get across there safely to that east side of Sand Acres on the trail. And then ultimately, that leads you on the A and R Pipeline Trail and ultimately leads you to the park that's on the east side of Sand Acres Drive itself. So those are my comments at this time.
Is the pipeline a trail at this moment?
It is on the east side of Sand Acres, correct?
But is it a trail?
It's a gravel, it's a gravel trail at this point.
There is a gravel path?
Yes.
On our property, it is not. It is a golf course.
Pardon?
On our property, it's strictly a golf course. There's no trail currently.
But it sure makes sense to put it in as a trail at a later point in time. This is now, it's going to be differently than then.
Correct.
I mean, if the easement, if that easement between the two lots, if that stays a golf course for the next 50 years or whatever, me some point, that easement is released. But if it's not there, we all know we will never get that to come in after the residents have moved in and purchased their homes for us to come and say, oh, we'd like to put a public access through your lot. That will never occur. So this provides that access, and if the trail goes in, people can cut through. If someone lives in the south end of that development, for them to get up to the clubhouse, go on Sand Acres, get on that trail, you're talking at least a quarter-mile walk for somebody when they at the south end could simply cut through, get on the trail, decide to head north or south on that trail. So it is an important access point for bikes and pets to be able to take advantage of that pathway, that potential pathway in the future.
I can agree with that portion of it, but not sidewalks.
You know, Gary, if you're talking safety, you know, you had said, you know, the trail's safe and people can meet on it and hang out and all that stuff.
The whole village is non-safe then, you're telling me, because you don't have sidewalks?
No, no, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that pathways are good in certain places, like Steve just mentioned. The other thing you have to remember with pathways is they are bidirectional, so people are going both directions on that. So then you have all these crossings, and it's a little more difficult for people to watch out and look for them. It just is not a good place for a pathway. It's a good place for sidewalks, but a pathway would not be as safe for the people that are using it in this residential development.
Well, I don't have a problem with the easement between the two lots on the south end of it, but as I stated before, we do not require sidewalks in our ordinance as it currently sits. And I think that the trail is a good compromise.
Well, and something else, the village is noted for their nice trail system wherever we can build them. People do not have any problem with that whatsoever. This is just the start of developing this property on this part of the village. In time, we will be connecting this, hopefully this particular trail, to other ways of, means of getting around or through or onto another trail that is existing right now. So we're just beginning of this phase. I mean, we're going to continue on moving with this hopefully in the future, and we can keep connecting that trail to a safe and pleasant for the people to get in and out of there and still be safe yet. I mean, they're not that far from Lost Lake, or, excuse me, Lost Lane. Lost Lane brings you right out to Fernando. Fernando, that's all ditches, there's not even a sidewalk there. So, you know, there's just so many different options here that I personally, the little bit of sidewalk that's going there, I don't see where that's the safest thing in there. So...
Madam President, if I could maybe just add a few comments and maybe help kind of bring this item to resolution for the board. Ultimately, as has been described, our ordinance is, our municipal code does explicitly list certain improvements to be a requirement of any new subdivision. Curb, curb and gutter, storm sewer, sewer water improvements, street lighting, so on and so forth. Certainly, specific bicycle or pedestrian improvements are not explicitly stated within the ordinance. However, there is an opportunity for the board to require certain other improvements within the code, hence the ability to require either sidewalk or trail for that matter. So you have the ability within the code and within the statutes to have this discussion and debate. And at this point, it's really kind of more of a question of what is the preferred facility, if any? And there are pros and cons to certainly both types of facilities. As Trustee Flukie has pointed out, safety is a primary concern with going from a sidewalk facility to what we call a side path or a trail. And the reason for that is that bidirectional component, you have that multi-direction use on the trail, and when people are backing out of their driveways, they're not necessarily certain if a bicyclist is either going to be coming from the right or the left, and that creates those conflict points. There are some other pros to each facility type from a maintenance standpoint. When sidewalk is installed and any private, adjacent to any private property, village code requires the adjacent property owner to maintain that sidewalk in the winter. So that all but assures that if sidewalk is installed in this subdivision, it will be available and usable even in the winter months. Now, there are some challenges to that, however. If we were to extend sidewalk along Highland Ridge down Hank, there are two outlots, both for stormwater ponds. And then that sidewalk would ultimately run adjacent to those stormwater facilities. And then we, as a village, we would take ownership of those outlots, and then we would be obligating ourselves to providing the winter maintenance for that site. So there is some added burden to the village as well. On the trail side, we are not obligated to provide winter maintenance, nor does village code require winter maintenance on trails to be performed by the adjacent property owners. So there are some exclusions to our requirement to maintain that. Now, with that challenge, so that's a benefit that there's no required winter maintenance. However, if we have this nice 10-foot-wide pedestrian trail in that subdivision and 134 new residents or homes, there's going to be a desire to have that trail maintained in the winter. And so there will be a constant push and struggle to ensure that maintenance. So there's kind of pros and cons to both from that standpoint. There's going to be maintenance either way from a village point of view, and there's going to be undue pressure to perform additional maintenance in the event that you install those improvements as well. Bear in mind, the Sand Acres Trail, that is, as indicated, a trail. It is not at current time maintained in the winter either. So if you do maintain the sidewalk in the winter, unless the village decides to provide maintenance on Sand Acres Trail, that will not be maintained in the winter. And so there's going to be that constant connectivity challenge that the village will face with adding those improvements. So again, traditionally, what we would like is if these improvements were explicitly stated in the ordinance, well, then we can provide for them, and we don't necessarily have to establish policy ad hoc, if you will, per every plat that comes forward. So I think it really comes down to a couple of things. One, if safety is the most important factor as it relates to pedestrians and bicyclists, sidewalk might be the best option. It is more costly to the developer, and it does require additional maintenance by the village because of the continuity of sidewalks along the outlots. If the ease and convenience of the trail is more important and you're comfortable with the idea of either maintaining it in the winter or not, then the trail might be a more palatable approach to providing some connectivity to the village. So I would really kind of try to base it on those factors and not so much whether or not we can require it or can't, because I think ultimately, we can make that requirement. It's just more or less, what is the desired facility, if any, at this point?
Anybody want to make a motion or a comment?
All right, if there's no more questions, I'm going to make a motion to approve the preliminary request, or preliminary plot for Highland Ridge with the trail, with access between lot 121 and 122 to get over to the trail there per se, power line or gas line, whatever it is, with staff conditions.
From the Planning Commission?
Pardon?
From the Planning Commission.
From the Planning Commission.
Okay. Sir, second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Paul, second by Trustee Zerbal, to approve the preliminary plat with the trail, with the easement between lot 120 and 122, is that?
121 and 122.
121 and 122 with recommendation, or with staff conditions from the Planning Commission. Okay.
The one question I would ask is, would there be an enhanced crossing at Highland Ridge across Sand Acres?
Trustee Paul, would you...
Are you leaving that out?
The enhanced, to cross Sand Acres where you come in and out of, on Highland Ridge?
On Highland Ridge here, yeah.
Did you want to add the enhanced?
Sand Acres.
To cross there?
To cross Sand Acres.
Yes, definitely. That I don't have.
Okay. Trustee Zerbal, you're okay with that?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
If a definition can be provided as to what that means, that would be helpful for design.
I would think that an engineer would look at that and determine what an enhanced crossing would be. I mean, I think that as safe as we can make it for people to cross that, and just having an engineer make that determination on what the enhanced crossing should be.
By saying enhanced crossing, I'm assuming with your knowledge that you've got an idea in mind. If there's an idea in mind, that'd be great just to give the developer.
Well, I have an idea in mind, but everyone else may not have that same idea in mind. So I would say that my thing on it is it should not be just white lines going across Sand Acres. That's not going to cut it. You need to have something that really sets off that there's a crossing here, whether it's lights, whether it's a median in the middle of Sand Acres, so you have a stage crossing for bikes and pets. I think, again, that's, I think, something that an engineer needs to determine based on this development and the crossing of that road.
Stacy, can't we, Tracy, can't we do something to give Doug some direction, something similar to the Packers crossing Ridge Road from the stadium over to the Title Town District so that the pedestrians or the cars do have to stop and they can get across safely?
I guess just along those lines, because I heard you talking about Cormier Road and the crossings along there. So I thought you were meaning something along that line where it was like a crossing at Santa Barbara that's currently out there at Shady Lane. That was my question, is what, there's obviously a thought of what would be like. It's just give that, give that thought so that it can be, so it can be flushed through. Instead of if something else is determined, we'd hate to just have somebody disappointed in what is brought forward. If there's an idea that's out there, it'd be great to have.
Okay, Trevor wants to say something.
Well, I was just looking for a little clarity from Mr. Kubiak. For that easement, you had mentioned that we would delay installation of anything there until that property would change. Is that correct? That would be part of this, where we dedicate that easement so you have it, but we wouldn't actually pave it and put a connecting point into a private business and right away, correct? We would just plat that easement and then at a future date, if that property use would change for the Executive Nine, at that time, the trail would be installed?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then for the enhanced crossing, if it's my correct understanding, is Bike and Pet recommended that the village is to develop that enhanced crossing, not for the developer to develop it? Is that correct?
No, no. Aaron, was that the recommendation by Bike and Pet that the village put that in?
At Bike and Pet, it was, I guess, you know, Tracy, you were there. My impression was that it was kind of a gray area to be determined. In the staff report, it does reference the village to install it. I think from a, it seems to make the most sense for the village to take on improvement on an off-site street that's not part of the plat itself. I guess that's probably up for discussion.
Okay, well, we got to determine tonight, I would think, what an enhanced intersection means, because otherwise, it's going to get...
I guess I'll help it along, because I thought this was all part of, without being at the meeting, I thought this was all part of the development. So if the enhanced crossing is going to be on the village, that is something we'll have to take and run with and figure out. If that's a cost that the village is going to be undertaking, we don't need to have direction for the developer. So that was the reason for my question, is I thought this was part of the development itself. If this is going to be a village improvement that's funded...
We had talked about it by Pet. Like Aaron said, it was kind of a gray area, but we felt, and I thought there was some talk about the developer participating in it, because this is an access point to their development. And they participate in some shape, whether it's they help half the cost of it or whatever, because they are going to have to have access to their development. And we had talked about them helping and sharing in the cost of an enhanced development or access point as well, and an access point crossing.
Yeah, the 50% allocation probably makes some sense, because it will benefit those other than in the subdivision itself, but it will directly impact the subdivision from a positive perspective. So I would think something 50/50. And I think something minimum would be the Santa Barbara type of thing with the cone and the crossing alert, that type of thing would be in order. Of course, if you have the crossing there, you're going to have to hook up with the trail. We're going to have to go through some grassy area. And I would say, Doug, you can use your judgment, we trust it explicitly, and if there's some direction from others that you would be able to glean that would make that a safe intersection without substantial costs. You know, we're not talking about, you know, widening it out and costing, you know, $50,000 or something like that, but something that is similar to Santa Barbara and with minor enhancements that might make some sense. We're not trying to make this explicitly a high cost to the developer. I think it's a great development, and I think it makes sense. It's good welcome here. And if we can just make it safer at that intersection, the easement and the trail, I think that's a compromise for all parties.
And just to be clear, I think what the intent is, is obviously to have a marked crosswalk across Sand Acres with ADA accessible ped crossing, or ped pads, and in all likelihood, some type of solar-powered rapid flashing beacon of some sort marking the pedestrian crossing. Is that, is that what's at Santa Barbara? Okay.
That makes sense from my perspective, if it does for the rest of the board.
And that just provides clarity.
Very similar to Sand Acres, excuse me, to Shady then, what you're talking about, which is a lot less than what I just said. And I agree with you. Mine was pretty extravagant, I guess, but that would make sense, Steve, the way you...
So are you going to add that to your motion, Gary?
Yes, definitely.
Well, does that satisfy you guys? Because what was passed that Plan Commission? You know, we can't change the game on these guys.
Nothing was, I mean, it was passed without sidewalks or trails.
Nothing was passed regarding sidewalks and trails. It was after Planning Commission that it went to Bike and Pet. We were unaware it was going there, otherwise we would have attended that meeting as well. Having since learned about it is where we've gotten to today. It makes sense to have that crossing as you tie into the trail system. When it comes to the cost, I just wanted to be clear, as the staff notes, that it was a village. If it's going to be a 50/50 split, you know, I just want to make sure cost is kept in mind, both for the developer and the village, that we're not... mind, both for the developer and the village, that we're not going over and above for something that, you know, having a marked barrier as described with a solar panel flashing makes some sense to draw attention to traffic, to be aware of pedestrians. So I believe that's acceptable to me, and I'd be happy to continue to work with staff on making that happen, and do a 50/50 cost, if that's what's needed to get it done.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I see here, it says, since the Plan Commission originally recommended approval of the preliminary, so I, okay.
That was without any sidewalks or trails.
Are you willing to go 50/50?
It's something I'd like to talk with staff, I guess, and it, I believe, yes, that would be acceptable, as I'm, you know, beating 134 lots to that connecting point. I'm willing to share that cost. To absorb the whole cost on property that I don't own could be a stretch, but I believe 50/50 would be a, you know, good compromise.
Okay. Okay, so you'll amend your motion, and Chris, you were the second, you will amend. So do you have it, Beth? Okay, to approve the preliminary plot with the trail on the north side of Highland Ridge, the easement between 121 and 122, but not to be paved, but just the dedicated easement, and then also to share 50/50 in the cost of the enhanced crossing. Okay, that's what everybody discussed.
Correct.
Okay. Any more discussion? You would have to, you can, but you would have to come, and we would have to open the floor, because... Oh. Okay, well, but we'll have to, Aaron?
I can make a quick comment. The lost lane is currently, that's in a CSM to become a separate lot, and we have no future land use at this time dedicated for it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Aaron is, to figure out... Okay.
I think it sounds like Aaron will be able to answer her question, hopefully, so...
So Aaron, we can keep going with the motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, everybody understands the motion? Hearing no more discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed, me.
One opposition?
Yeah, and the reason, I just wanted to tell you guys, I am glad that the other thing is going in, but I have very big concerns about the trail. It is not the place for a trail to be, and I just can't support it. If the sidewalks were there, I would definitely support it.
Thank you. Okay, 11D, action regarding site brand, whoa, action regarding site plan review for Anduzy's Patio, 1992 Holmgren Way, parcel VA-41-5. Aaron?
The requested site plan review for Anduzy's is, because it's within the sports entertainment district, does go to Plan Commission and Village Board, in addition to Site Plan Review Committee. The requested site plan review is for Anduzy's to add a, basically an outdoor patio area in front of their existing building, out to the, roughly the village right of way. The proposal is to have planter boxes surrounding the outside, or the perimeter of the patio area, as well as then have a shipping container to be used as utilized outdoor bar in the south side, and a stage on the north side. In discussions with Public Safety, the site plan did show the south side container into the fire, fire lane, so that was requested to move further to the north as a condition of approval. Site Planner View Committee and Planning Commission both recommend approval with staff conditions at their respective meetings, and I'll just mention those conditions at this point. Confirm there's not a utility easement west of the Holmgren Way right of way. Water sewer services to the building run through this area. If there's a service issue in the future, it would disturb the patio area. So again, that was just a note to the owner. From Public Safety, you mentioned the shifting location of the bar container to the north. Coordinate with the trouble on Public Safety regarding fire lane markings. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, Andy Simansky of Anduzy's is in the audience as well.
Okay, any questions?
Aaron, can you please clarify how far off the edge of the sidewalk the planting boxes will be located?
Sure, they'll be 24 inches off of the sidewalk to accommodate the rolled curb and stormwater inlets.
Okay, so then at the sidewalk, the curb will be there, and it'll be at the grade, same grade as the sidewalk, and then it'll go up, and then we'll be two feet beyond that, where the planting beds will be.
So it'll be two feet from the edge of the sidewalk, so it'll be the, the distance of the curb itself, 24 inches.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I just have a question on lighting, this may be a funny one, but I know you're putting lighting over the patio. Is there any concern with spill or glare from that lighting for all the motor vehicle drivers that are driving there? Are they a pretty small light that will not create a lot of spill or glare?
Yeah, so those are actually small, basically patio LED lights, like you see across porches. So they're really, the glare they generate is very minor. It's a very soft light, it's meant to just provide accent lighting.
Okay, thank you.
There's a description of that lighting in your packet there to show that they're bigger patio lights, they don't really show a lot of...
Yeah, I did look, though, it just looked really big to me, Gary, so I was like, okay, are they, you know, big ones, or are they little ones? So, thank you.
All right, if there's no other questions, I'll move to approve the patio for Anduzy's as presented, with staff conditions.
Second.
Do we have a second? Yep, okay. Motion by Gary Paul, seconded by trustee Williams, to approve the site plan for Anduzy's Patio, parcel VA-41-5. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried, thank you. 11E, action on premise amendment request AM Investment LLC DBA Anduzy Sports Club. This would be 20.
I can attempt to help out, too. This particular application was brought forward to Public Works and Protection Committee this past month. It's consistent with the previous action that you had just taken in regards to the Anduzy's outdoor patio area. What they're seeking to do is extend their premise description on their liquor license, so that it could extend out into that patio area. It was, again, reviewed by Public Works and Protection Committee and was approved with, with the conditions that were identified in the staff report.
And the patio area does not need a fence around the whole thing because of the liquor license, is that correct?
Correct.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Paul, seconded by trustee Kubiak, to approve the amended request for Anduzy's Patio liquor license. Are any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Okay, 11F, action on Class B Beer/Class C Wine Liquor License, Newell Company, Inc., DBA Stage 1017.
I can help with this one as well. So Stage 1017 is owned by Newell Company Incorporated, which purchased 1017 Wabi Lane this last February on the 26th. What they are looking to do is essentially planning to have, basically kind of a game room, if you will, for adults, so 14 pinball machines, and an active game show environment for adults to participate in. So what they are, what they have applied for essentially is a Class B beer license as a recreational facility. Under the statutes, they are permissible to receive that Class B license. They've also applied for a Class C wine license. Unfortunately, under the statutes, a Class C wine license is not an eligible license for a recreational facility. They would need to be some type of restaurant, if you will, in order to be in compliance with statutes for that type of license. This particular request came before the Public Works and Protection Committee this past month. The committee recommended approval for the Class B beer license. However, they did recommend denial for the Class C wine license as it relates to the fact that it's not in compliance with Wisconsin State statutes.
As Joel said, it came, it came in front of the Public Works Protection, we, we had to make two motions to approve the beer, and one to not approve the wine because of the type of service they're doing. So if there's no other questions, I'll move to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay, so Gary, is that to approve the wine, and then we'll take the, or, excuse me, to approve the beer?
Just the beer.
Just the beer?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion by trustee Paul, and seconded by trustee Flukie, to approve the Class B beer license. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Okay, the next one is the Class C wine.
Move to deny the wine license.
Second.
A motion by trustee Paul, seconded by trustee Flukie, to deny the wine, Class C wine license.
We really don't have any kind of option on this, do we?
No.
Right.
No, doesn't qualify, so... All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried, thank you. Okay, 11G, action on Class A Beer/Class A Liquor Cider Only Request for Packerland Express LLC DBA Oneida BP.
I am going to recuse myself from any discussion or vote on this item.
Okay.
Okay, Randi Enterprises LLC DBA Oneida Street Express currently holds the liquor license at 2031 South Oneida Street, Packerland Express LLC. They will be leasing 2031 South Oneida Street and is requesting a Class A Beer, Class A Liquor, Cider Only License. As of right now, all licensing and payment requirements have been met. It was noted that one of the agents for, one of the owners of Randi Enterprises LLC, and I apologize if I misspell the name, Mr. Hemraj Sharma, does have an operating while intoxicated violation, his first offense. As of January of 2019, however, that is beyond the policy period that is required for that. In addition, he will not be listed as an agent on the license itself, he's just an owner of the company. This was, again, presented to Public Works and Protection earlier this month with recommendation for approval.
Okay.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Paul, seconded by trustee Williams, to approve as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, with trustee Zerbal abstaining. 11H, action on Class B Beer, Class B Liquor License GBWI Associates LLC DBA Aloft, Green Bay.
This particular application is for a company that has taken receivership of Aloft here in Ashwabhanan. So AB Hospitality LLC was the previous license holder. GBWI is the receivership company that's taking over the operation of the hotel, and because of that, that change in, in operating ownership, we need to amend the license to reflect that GBWI Associates is now the agent. This, again, was presented to committee and was recommended for approval.
Is there any concern that two of the applicants are from the East Coast?
No, that's pretty typical, especially in franchise-type operations, whether it be a hotel, or even a restaurant, oftentimes the agents are from out of state.
And then the other question I have is, it says on there that they have to meet the village's financial obligations. What are, what is that, and have they met that?
I am not certain that they have not met that, but generally speaking, if there's any outstanding payments, taxes, you know, let's say their utility bills are outstanding, room tax dollars are outstanding, property taxes, if those elements are outstanding, then the license would be withheld until those things are, are paid in full.
At the Public Works and Protection, they were met financially.
Thank you.
According to our clerk. Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by trustee Paul, seconded by trustee Zerbal, to approve as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. 11I, committee appointments. We have the committee appointments for this next year. We do have, one gentleman from Public Works is moving over to the Park Department, so we will have somebody finishing out Public Works for one year, and then all the trustees. So, any questions, or any motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Kubiak, seconded by trustee Flukie, to approve the committee appointments as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. 11J, action on Ashwabhanan Marina Bid Submittal, Rex.
This is to consider the bid that Martel Construction submitted for the repair of the Ashwabhanan Marina Piers. As you know, the end of each one of the piers, both the north and south pier, have cracked due to undermining of the gravel and the stone underneath it, due to some of the high water we had in the last several years, and some of the larger storm events. Bids were open, Martel was the single bidder. There were about six bidders that, that paid to have the plans taken out, but Martel was the sole submitter of, of a bid, using Peters Concrete as one of their subs. The dollar amount is $49,000 and change, as you can see on your sheet, $49,919.5. That's about $4,500 over what was originally thought of. That specifically is because of additional work that needs to be done on some of the walkway lighting. Along the pier pathway, there's, there's at least four additional lights that were not noticed before that are starting to tilt. Since we're already working on a couple of them, probably best to have them all done at the same time, so you don't have to remobilize and pay any of a higher cost. So that is the difference, or the reason for the higher cost from what the original estimates were to be. I talked with Greg Wenholz, our finance director, and he assured us that there is no issue paying that additional amount out of TIF III, which is, which is what, where the funding would come for this. So staff recommendation is to accept the bid from Martel Construction in the amount of $49,919.5 for the pier repair.
Rex, you brought this in front of us, I'm going to say, early spring regarding the, the damage done there. This is the same, we're just summarizing it right now with the bid.
Correct.
Am I right? Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, this is what we told Rex to go ahead and get this taken care of, and this is your recommendation, and with that, I'd make a motion to approve the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the bid for Martel Construction for $49,919.5. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. 11K, action on resolution to allow application for DNR funding.
So this is further proposed Ashwabhanay Trail Bridge, which, if approved at some point in the future, would go from Alden Station over into Ashwabhanay Park. We are applying for a stewardship grant through the DNR. Stewardship, it comes in different forms and fashion, Land Water Conservation, Land Water Conservation Fund, recreational trails, there's different aspects to a stewardship grant. And funding could come, could come out of any of the different pots of money that the DNR has. With that, the DNR always wants to make sure that a governing body is aware of the project and approves of the project during the grant submittal, so that there's no surprises. Apparently, there have been in the past, otherwise they wouldn't have this rule. So what we're doing now is, is basically stating to the DNR through this resolution that we're aware of the project. Should the project go forward, the village has the money to cover it, which, which our finance director, again, has said that we do, based off the cost estimates. So we're looking for approval of, of the resolution, which would be submitted with the grant application.
I would make that motion to approve, moving forward, with the application for DNR funding as presented. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Kubiak, seconded by trustee Zerbal, to approve resolution number R-4-2-21. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
11L, Consider Discuss Act on Municipal Property Tax Bill Intergovernmental Services Agreement with Brown County. Joel?
Okay, well, Mary put in a good effort. As you may, may be aware, Brown County, for a number of years, has collected both first installment property taxes, as well as the second installment in... installment property taxes as well as the second installment in July. Recently, we became notified by the county treasurer that they were no longer interested in collecting that first installment, and that local municipalities would then be required under the statutes to perform that service. We felt strongly enough, even at the board level here, in passing a resolution indicating our strong desire to encourage the county to continue that first installment effort, primarily because it consolidates payment locations and expedites the process for taxpayers. And then at the end of the day, it really kind of saves everybody some money because you have one entity conducting business that every other municipality would have to provide otherwise. Mary attended a number of county board meetings, and, and many of the other local municipalities throughout the county supported that effort in trying to encourage that first installment continued to be maintained by Brown County. Unfortunately, the county treasurer, for the better part, was not interested in participating in those discussions or being cooperative in that effort. In addition to that, the county board did make some efforts to try to accommodate not only us as a village and some of the other villages in the, in the county, but also many of the towns as well. And their accommodation was more or less, we will conduct first installment collection again next year with no guarantee that we will do that for future years, so it would be essentially a one-year guarantee, but we will also do that for cost. And that cost is roughly, is a $1.60 per parcel. For the number of parcels that we have and, and that matter, it would cost us over $12,000 for the county to provide that service for us. So in review of their offer, their contingency, if you will, we felt that it would be best suited for us if we just take that first installment collection here at Village Hall, much like all the other municipalities will likely be doing because of that added cost of $1.60 per parcel. So at the end of the day, what we're looking for from the board tonight is just general direction, that that is indeed the route that you would take. And then what we would need to do is essentially come up with a revised agreement with the county, because the county's proposed agreement has that $1.60 per parcel element in it, the agreement that we received this past week. What we would still have the county do is still prepare the tax bills like they've done in the past and then mail them, because at the end of the day, that, that does provide an efficient service, and so they will be willing to continue to do that. So we would pay the county, much like we have in the past, to prepare the tax bill and mail it, but then when it comes to the collection of property taxes in December and January, we would handle it here at Village Hall. It should be noted that there likely will be some additional costs for us to conduct that work. There may be times where we need to bring in some part-time temporary help just to process payments, and we're gonna gauge that based on what we think that demand is. Couple, couple other elements that we will investigate and work towards before we get to December, and that is a relationship with a variety of financial institutions. A number of our local banks and credit unions in our community would be more than willing to, or likely be willing to accept payments at their branch locations. And by doing that, that will reduce some of that overall burden of in-person traffic into Village Hall as well. It appears anyway that the county struggled to maintain relationships with financial institutions for a variety of reasons. We feel that we have the ability with our current relationships with our banks and credit unions that we should be able to have that ability here in Ashwabanon. So collection should be relatively smoothless, it's just a matter of taxpayers knowing that they will no longer go down to the county courthouse to pay their taxes, but rather come back here to Village Hall again. So our recommendation from a staff perspective is to enter into an agreement with Brown County to prepare and mail the tax bills, but that the village of Ashwabanon will collect first, first installment payments beginning for 2021 taxes payable in 2022.
Joel, you keep talking about first installment. What about the second installment in July?
Second installment is required under statutes to be collected at the county, so that will remain at the county.
Will they be done through the county or through a bank like we've been doing it?
Well, if, if an individual misses their first installment, or, or let's say they, they make a, an installment payment and then they want to make their second installment, in all likelihood, they would have to make that directly through the county and not a financial institution, should the county not have that relationship established. So their payment would, through a financial institution with us, would either be a payment in full or this, just the first installment.
Because I see a lot of people making a second installment in July, and our, I believe it's North Shore right across the way here was one of our collecting spots. I can see that gonna be a problem for people that are, where do I go?
I, definitely all of the changes, regardless of whether they can use North Shore Bank for both first and second installment, is gonna require quite a communication effort, because there will be a number of people that, out of habit, will go to the county courthouse or go to North Shore Bank if that is still or is not one of those financial institutions. So will definitely require a, quite a concerted effort to communicate that.
Okay.
We, we still actually have people walking in here to pay their taxes that, they said, well, I paid them here last year and they actually haven't paid them here since 2012.
Long time.
So, but we'll have to start doing it again, so.
Do you have any idea if someone would go to the county that lives in Ashwabanon to pay down there? Are they just gonna take it and then charge us the parcel fee, or how are they gonna handle? Are they gonna say, no, you can just go to Ashwabanon?
They will not take it.
They will not take it.
Correct. They will, they'll tell, tell them to come here on Holmgren Way. Yeah.
Yeah, two or three years ago, the city of Green Bay stopped having the county collect their first payment, Village of Howard did, and also the Village of Denmark, so we'll see where it goes.
In talking with Swamaco, Ledgeview, obviously DePere, at this point, for a $1.60 a parcel, all of the, all of those communities at this, at this juncture are planning on collecting their own first installments.
Yeah, the actual agreement that was sent specifically states that DePere will not be collected, even for a $1.60, so.
So you want a recommendation, and we don't have any recommendation other than one. Am I right?
Well.
All right.
Can I ask a question about mailing? Then mailing will still go to the county then? Like, when I'm paying my taxes, I just mail it into the county, or how is that gonna be handled?
Correct. First, first installment or that initial payment in full before January 31st will have to be mailed directly to the Village of Ashwabanon. Second installment has to get mailed to the county. Right.
So the tax bills that they prepare and send out, will it say where to send it?
Yes, traditionally, there's a little box on the tax bill that gives you very limited room to, you know, advertise maybe collection hours or location of where taxes are to be paid. So yes, certainly on the tax bill itself, it will have that. How many people actually read that section? That, that might be a different story.
I'm just thinking more like, for me personally, I escrow and my, my company pays my taxes, they get the tax bill and they pay the taxes, so I just want to make sure, do I need to watch my company? Or, you know, other people in that situation? If it's on the tax bill where you have a third party send it for you, I just want to make sure that that's made clear where they need to go.
Having worked in Adagamy County, all the local municipalities collect first installment or payment in full there, and we always encouraged in, in those communities to, even if you're escrowing your tax payment, to always contact your municipal clerk or treasurer, get a copy of your receipt, make sure that that escrow was paid in full and that it was paid accurately, because oftentimes, you'll have a situation where the escrow may be like a penny or two short, and then you have a second installment that's due, and then you might generate penalties on a few cents to the dollar. So it's always important to get a receipt.
Okay, so at the bottom of the green sheet is a motion. If anybody would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Brown County property tax bill agreement with the condition that any future revisions to the scope of the agreement be brought back to the village board for consideration and possible approval.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Flukie, seconded by trustee Paul, for what it says at the bottom of the green sheet. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 11M, possible discussion and action on ordinance number 04-2-21, amending section 7-4-100 related to no parking on True Lane and Orlando Drive.
Okay, as was indicated earlier by trustee Zerbal, I had a little bit of a brain freeze and, and mentioned Pioneer School instead of Valley View School in the green sheet. But this is in relation to amending our no parking ordinance to provide for a section of no parking on True Lane and Orlando Drive by Valley View School, from the, kind of the southern end of True and Orlando up to the, the next kind of entrance, exits at Valley View and the lot across the street. And this is as a result of requests of the school resource officer with Ashwabanon Public Safety as well as Public Works, our, our supervisor, indicating that they've had a, a variety of challenges as far as individuals parking in this area, which is affecting the ability to buses to come in and out with respect to Valley View School. So as a result, this is a request to amend our no parking ordinance, just to make those sections on both sides of the streets, no parking, and the ordinance that is contained does reference Valley View, it's just the green sheet that had the, the incorrect school designation. So if that, I'd request to approve the ordinance.
I'd make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Kabaki, seconded by trustee Flukie to approve ordinance number 04-2-21. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11N, consider discuss act, rebound workers' compensation assistance program. Joel.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. The rebound program is a program offering through the League of Wisconsin Municipalities' Mutual Insurance Program, which is our provider for property liability and workers' compensation insurance. This is a new offering that they've entered into an agreement with rebound for, so it's outside of our normal scope of policy, if you will, but the league is providing full reimbursement for the costs of the services. So although the village ultimately, if it enters into an agreement with rebound, will pay the upfront cost, we will be automatically reimbursed by the league's mutual insurance program for that service. Effectively, what rebound is, is it's designed as a program to help expedite the diagnosis and treatment of injuries, workplace-related injuries for our public safety officers, as well as our frontline field staff in both Parks Rec Forestry and Public Works Utilities. So if any of those individual employees gets injured on the job, and we obviously go through the appropriate reporting process for a workplace injury, we also contact rebound. And then at that point, rebound is working with us to provide an expedited opportunity for diagnosis on the injury, and then a, a, a pattern of care, if you will. From what the league has identified through other municipalities that have used rebound, that they can ultimately reduce the amount of work time lost for the employee, because they can treat and diagnose the issue quicker than if you went through your normal practitioner or provider. Think about it as the Packers, they have a team doctor on the field, and then as soon as an injury occurs, they're essentially able to get a diagnosis either on the field in that blue tent or shortly thereafter, after they leave the field on the cart. And this is very similar to that process. So an injury occurs on the job, rebound is notified, and they can get in, let's say, Dr. McKenzie to treat or to diagnose and set a care package for that employee. Again, by doing that, it will expedite the healing process, and because of that, there's less lost time. The treatments are cared for more appropriately because you have the best practitioners caring for that type of injury, and so the employee can get back to work quicker, and then the employer ultimately has less expenses for two reasons. One, there's less ultimate cost to our workers' compensation insurance provider, so that reduces our overall insurance liability, but it also reduces our costs as it relates to overtime, because we don't have to fill as many shifts waiting for that employee to be healed and return fit for duty. So again, staff is recommending to enter into a three-year agreement with rebound with the, with the idea that the League of Wisconsin Mutual Insurance Program will provide full reimbursement for that three-year contract period.
This seems to be a proactive program that benefits municipalities, the employees, and the insurance companies at the same time. So with that, I would make a motion to approve the rebound assistance program proposal slash statement for work with LW MMI reimbursement for the three-year contract period. It, it's, it makes sense for us from, from a number of different reasons.
I'll second that, but I have clarification, please, Joel. So this covers public safety and our field, like, workers, so that the staff that's out doing the work out in the, in the field.
Correct.
So let's say one of our administrative employees or secretary of staff has a workman competition issue, what happens with that? Do they, they don't go through this program, they're in a separate standard workman comp?
Correct.
All right.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Kabaki, a second by trustee Flukie to approve the rebound assistance program proposal. Any questions?
Yeah, where are we putting the blue tent?
Right outside of Tony's office.
I thought Doug would take care of that.
Okay, that, that's part of the, part of the motion, right? No, I'm, okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11O, consider discuss and possible action on American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA.
Some of you may be aware that as part of the recent legislation passed at the federal level and then signed into law by the president, it's called ARPA or ARP, it's basically the American Rescue Plan Act back in March. That particular federal legislation provided relief in the terms of, of funding to local, to state and local units of government. And just kind of the breakdown is, there was a big pool of money out of that $1.9 trillion, roughly $350 billion of, of it is going to state and local units. Of that $350 billion that's getting divided once more, so there's approximately $130 billion that's going to be divided between cities and counties, cities, villages, towns. And then that kind of gets trickled down. So every town, city, village in Wisconsin is getting an allocation of its, of, of this funding. And for the Village of Ashwabanon, that equates to $1.7 million. Now, with any federal legislation, there's little detail that comes through that legislation, it's usually after the fact that you find out what all the rules and stipulations are. So at this point, there are very limited direction as to what the eligible uses are for that $1.7 million. I should also note that $1.7 million will be divided into two installments, so we do suspect, or do expect, rather, to get the first installment early this summer and then another installment in 2022. All of funds from both installments must be spent by the end of year 2024. You can hold money until you receive both installments in order to utilize the full balance. You don't have to, you can begin spending the funds right away for those eligible uses. The primary eligible uses are to use as revenue replacement. So if, as an example, in the 2021 budget, we had a deficit, an operating deficit more or less in our, in our budget, we were gonna take money from our general fund reserve or fund balance and plug that gap as a result of a loss of room tax dollars, service agreements with the United Tribe, and so on and so forth. And so we could take this money and we could plug it into our budget and then take that, that reserve funding that we were planning on spending or filling in the gap and, and pull that back into reserve. There are some points that we'll make regarding that later. We can use it towards other COVID-related expenditures that have had a negative economic impact, not only to our organization, but to other organizations throughout the community, whether that be private businesses, households, industries, so on and so forth. Can provide premium pay to essential workers, or you can make investments, specific investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Now there, with any federal funding that doesn't have an explicit Now, there, with any federal funding that doesn't have an explicit grant program listed with it, there are ways that you can probably finagle that money to make it meet the eligible uses, but maybe somewhat kind of on that fringe area of what is considered eligible and what is not. There are a couple of items here that were identified that these uses cannot be used for, so they cannot be used to directly or indirectly offset tax reductions or delay a tax or tax increase. So they want to basically charge the economy, if you will, and not use it to reduce spending. And then funds cannot be deposited into any type of pension fund. So it cannot be used as an extension of benefits program or pension funding gaps and things like that. Those are viewed as issues that began well before the pandemic, and they want to make sure that these funds aren't used to solve problems that the municipalities may have incurred prior to the pandemic. Again, these funds are temporary. It's a one-time allocation. In talking with others that have been doing this certainly much longer than I have, I don't know that I recall ever seeing the federal government just dole out millions of dollars to every municipality across the country. So this is a very rare occurrence. There are much more details that are yet to be followed by the Department of Treasury as it relates to the accounting and the use of those funds. So until we get more detailed directive from the Department of Treasury, this is really just for informational purposes and discussion purposes only. There are a couple of talking points in the green sheet that kind of give you some food for thought, if you will, as we move forward and we kind of develop a plan for how to best utilize the $1.7 million. And I certainly won't bore you with those, but there are a couple of items that I think would be worthwhile discussion points. One, when the CARES Act expired on December 31st, that eliminated our reimbursement for sick leave balances that were used as a relation to the COVID pandemic. The village board did adopt a policy allowing employees to utilize their own sick leave to take time off for quarantining or isolating purposes. However, the village didn't have a reimbursement fund or source for that. And so the employees were burning through their own accruals as a result of that. Our recommendation as one of the options would be to utilize this funding to basically reimburse the employees for that lost accrual from January 1 through September 30th for COVID reasons. In addition to that, we had obviously talked about, we were plugging our budget with reserve funds. If we didn't do that, we would have an excess amount of money in our reserve accounts. We were trying to spend down our reserve fund. Ultimately, we could take the ARPA money, plug it into our budget gap for the year, understanding that next year may or may not have another budget gap, and so we can hold some money in ARPA funds for that purpose. But the money that was then planned to be spent down out of our reserve, we could put it towards the projects that we had hoped to have had in 2021, but were unable to do so because of those revenue gaps. Couple of examples were the AV equipment in this particular room. There were some plans to replace the AV equipment in the boardroom, but CARES Act funding and things of that nature just ran short, and we weren't able to do that. The other option would be like our body cameras. We had intentions to take on some expenditures in 2021, but because of the pandemic, it was difficult for us to do that. And now we have a five-year agreement with Axon. It's kind of an unfunded liability, if you will, and so we could maybe put some of this money towards that program to reduce future liability on the village. So again, wanted to give you just a quick update. The village is anticipating on getting $1.7 million. Staff will be working on a plan and a proposal and a recommendation for the board to consider in the future, but we wanted to give you this information on the upfront, on the front end, so that you can kind of get your creative juices flowing a little bit in the event that when we come to you, you have some idea of what you would like to see happen. So with that, I'll answer any questions. Otherwise, this again will come forward as a future agenda item when something more concrete comes forward.
Well, thank you for the update. You know, again, we would rely on staff with the administrator, working with the department heads and the village president, to come up with a list that makes sense for us as we go for a list of priorities. That being said, we also need to be very careful that when we spend these dollars and expend these dollars, that they're used for long-term positive impacts on the community. And I'll use the term, not, something to the effect of, not nearly willy-nilly like some municipalities do when they see these dollars come across their desks. So with that, I've got confidence in the administrator and department heads that you'll keep us informed and bring to us a list of recommended utilizations of these funds to the benefit of the community long-term.
Any other discussions? Okay. 11P, action on resolution number R4-1-21, disallowance of claim.
All right, this resolution is in regards to a claim that was filed by Ms. Rosinski regarding a village tree branch falling during a high windstorm onto her vehicle in her driveway from the village tree that bordered her driveway. The claim was transferred to our insurance company, Statewide Services. They did an investigation regarding the claim. And by a letter dated April 8th, 2021, that was mailed to Ms. Rosinski, the, excuse me, insurance company specialist indicated that based upon their investigation, they're recommending the disallowance of the claim due to the high winds, which are essentially an act of God in which the village would have no control of and therefore no liability, contributed to the breaking of the large branch, as well as the fact that the village had no prior notice of any issue with the branch or tree in question to take any preventative measures, such as removing the branch. And finally, there was no evidence to indicate the village failed to adhere to any of its duties or mandates regarding tree inspection and maintenance. And so as a result of those reasons, the insurance company adjuster had recommended disallowance of the claim, and that is the basis for the resolution proposing disallowance of the claim.
Move to disallow the claim for panel of Rosinski.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Paul, seconded by trustee Kabaki, to approve resolution R4-1-21, disallowance of claim. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Items for next agenda? If anybody has any, give us a call at the office. We'll get it on the next one. And number 13, closed session items. Joel.
I'll do my best Patrick radio voice here, so just bear with me. During the meeting, the village board of the Village of Ashwabanon may convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub C, for consideration, discussion, action on the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee, including Ashwabanon Public Safety sick leave payouts and related litigation over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.851E, for consideration, discussion, action on deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business regarding Ashwabanon Public Safety sick leave payouts and related litigation where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, and Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.851G, for consideration, discussion, action on conferring with legal counsel concerning strategy with respect to Ashwabanon Public Safety sick leave payouts and related litigation in which it is or is or likely to become involved. The village board may thereafter reconvene into open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85 Sub 2 to report the results of closed session and consider the balance of the agenda.
I'll give you a B, Joel.
I need a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
We have a motion by trustee Williams, seconded by...
Second.
Trustee Zerbo. To go into closed session. Voice vote, please.
I gotta do a roll.
Yeah, well, voice vote or roll call? Roll call.
Roll call. President Kardaski?
Yes.
Gary Paul?
Yep.
Steve Kabaki?
He's gone. He's leaving.
Okay. Chris Zerbo?
Yes.
Allison Williams?
Yes.
Tracy Flukie?
Yes.
Okay, we're in closed session. We'll be in...
This conference is no longer being recorded.
We're going to go into A.
So...
Thank you, Beth. It was a really, really big show.
My dad just announced on Facebook, so I can say it, he is retiring on Friday and sold the company.
Is that right?
Yeah. He just announced it on Facebook, so I can say it, but my dad is officially retiring on Friday. Apparently, he's been in the works for like months. But...
So he sold it?
He sold it, yeah. He'll be keeping the building and the property.
Thank you, Beth.
But the, he sold it.
It was a really, really big show.
So Williams will no longer...
I wasn't too, like, not the one.
Done.